Tonnytown plans, zoning commission, please come to order. Would you stand for the pledge of the flag, please? George?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let the welcome you folks here this evening. Let the records reflect the members that are present. The commission members should have received the minutes of October 30th, 2017. Is there any correction or additions to those minutes?
Yes, sir. First sentence we need to change, September 25th to October 30th, 2017.
Anything else?
I make a motion to approve.
Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. All of those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, likewise? Carrie, thank you. Delegations and action items tonight. Presentation of concept site plan, 101, 103 York Street. LP Enterprise developer, BPR Incorporated engineer. I guess we're probably talking about the Hitchman.
You want me to do a quick intro?
Do a quickie.
Okay. Well, we've talked about this briefly for a couple of months now. So really, the idea is just adding an additional display lot for the sales area. And stormwater management, of course, comes with it because it's over 5,000 square feet. And I will turn it over to the developer. I guess I could have said brandy, but okay.
Yes.
One stone, little bit of small parking lot there, about 35,000 square feet. Can you tell you a little bit about what you've got in your yard and how you're going to make the display and that kind of thing?
Yep, pretty much, we're just looking to expand our current inventory of trailers and utilize portions of the lot during our current lot. Basically, just for display purposes. We developed a site plan, some stormwater management, and we're bringing it here and all our inventory. And this has been expanding over the years. So, and we're ready for another expansion.
What was the square footage of the area that you're going to expand?
The area of disturbance is 22,000 square feet.
Okay.
Total lot, so a little bit of right around the handback, I believe, one of that portion.
37,000.
460 square feet is the total area. Playable piece of the house, current lot. Corner of Commerce North remains. This small parking lot is the shaded area. Stormwater management is being done by the ditching basin in the north. Adam, Jim, and Randy, package my engineer on that one. Howling engineer, and kind of make out what's necessary for stormwater. Pretty much is just grinding out the plan through the site development process from here on.
The stormwater basin is just to cover the existing, or not the existing, but the new parking area?
New construction, yes.
How did we handle the storm management when you built the building? Jim, how was that handled?
It was pretty existing.
I don't think before my time.
Anybody? Okay.
I thought it was less than the amount that we had to...
It was, but when you add the toad, I'm just trying to figure where does that stormwater go?
That lot is pretty existing. The building is 490 per foot, our building there.
Okay.
Less than 5,000 square feet that you disturbed.
And we do have, there is a drainage, that lot, but it's a separate lot naturally. But, yeah, that lot, the gutter system drains to rip route, which in turn goes off to the city drainage. That was all.
It goes to the pond behind Commerce Street, down Commerce Street here, through amendment system, which is behind Adam's current facility. Right here, at the end of Maryland Avenue. Isn't it, that catches the water and gets down, gets down to the pond behind Commerce.
You guys know that there's an embankment on York Street, and that will remain. We're not cutting much to get, we have to cut, I think, about four foot at the corner to get to great, but we're looking to fence it for security purposes for our inventory, like we have now. And you see general picture of trees, you know, some evergreen type privacy screening between, you know, our lot and the rental property there, and then, of course, the neighbors on the other side, and then as well.
I see you have proposed fencing, six-foot-high fencing. What type of fencing is that going to be?
It's a chain link.
Chain link? So you're talking about security fence?
Yep.
Okay.
On two sides.
On two sides, right.
Two sides, yeah.
What are those wheels?
Yeah, I couldn't figure out what those wheels were.
Trees.
They're trees.
What kind of trees grow like that?
That's a symbol for, just as a, architectural symbol for trees.
Are you planting them in the alley?
I don't have that many.
Are these being planted in the alley?
They have 10-foot access to the alley, yes.
Why are you in the alley?
Oh, since attorney says we can't be.
Pardon?
Yeah, everything that we've researched from the city, and after our meeting a couple of months back, we did retain an attorney to look into it further, and they, I have some documentation from them, they deemed rights to that alleyway are granted half, 10-foot to the adjoining properties, 10-foot to the other properties.
Maryland Avenue, how far back do you go on that Maryland Avenue part? Show us what, show me what you own of Maryland Avenue.
You go back to that cul-de-sac, would you?
That's not on here. Yeah, pretty much.
Right here. Where does the Hitchman?
To this fence line.
You mean he owns this?
Yes.
And this guy only has access of a driveway off of Maryland Avenue, is that right?
Yes.
How did that ever happen? How was his, how was his access cut down to just a few feet?
That portion, I'm assuming you're pointing to the last home adjacent to the Hitchman on the cul-de-sac. Those three homes on that side were replatted after the majority of Free State Heights was completed. I was not staff at the time, but I do recall there was a lot of contention regarding that cul-de-sac, because initially, Maryland Avenue was envisioned to connect to York Street.
Right.
And when the developer of that section of Free State Heights, Interfaith Housing, was working through the subdivision process, the cul-de-sac was an on-again, off-again proposition, because they were, I think, also looking for some funding that did not come through. So the, at one point, I think, the council was looking to fund part of the connection between what would have been the terminus of Maryland Avenue and York Street, and then the council decided that they weren't going to move forward with that project, and the cul-de-sac went back in at that point. But the property that those three houses are, occupy now, was subdivided after most of Free State Heights was approved, so it's a little bit of a funky layout, I guess.
Well...
But we approved, I guess, a minor subdivision back in the day with the access being off of the cul-de-sac.
Well, the previous owner, too, went through, went through the council, went through the process to obtain ownership of the future Maryland Avenue.
Of, right, right. I was referring just to the three homes on that side.
Currently owned by, by the Hitchman.
Why would the, why would the council have approved a 20-foot right-of-way not being connected to Maryland Avenue and going on out to the cul-de-sac?
I didn't bring up with me, Mr. There, but this was created, God, what was the date of that?
I think 34.
Yeah, 1930s, yeah.
Because when that, when that was actually created.
We have, we have a right-of-way there, a 20-foot right-of-way.
Well, according to Miles and Stock, right, that was the 30, Miles and Stock, there was a question mark whether you really have a right-of-way there or not. It was established, the ownership, the actual ownership of that alley is retained by the owner of the land in 1934.
Right, and that was the original owner. He even plotted the whole works off.
Well, that, that's more of a question I ask to go to Jay regarding the reality of that right-of-way.
I don't like that proposed 20-foot alley dead-ending up against Hitchman.
Well, I mean, that's... When we purchased this, this was already taken care of. This alleyway...
We say we never knew that.
What's that?
We never knew that happened.
Well, that was probably done...
Yeah, if I can interject this for a second. This alleyway in Maryland Avenue, on the old plans, this alleyway actually continued all the way through this whole property. The shoemakers had purchased from Free State Heights the property behind the alleyway, and being that they purchased the property behind the alleyway and the property in front of the alleyway, there's documentation for that, too, and the council approved that alleyway was needed to the shoemakers back in 1990, I think it was.
So I remember he came in, because he didn't want, he didn't want Maryland Avenue through his property to get to York Road, York Street.
Well, I know we didn't want Maryland Avenue to come out on, out on the highway.
So, turn me up a little bit on what you're trying to say about the dead end of that, that alley that nobody has a D2.
I just assumed the unimproved alley that we're talking about now should have come right on around and gone to the cul-de-sac, a full right-of-way through there, a chance to open a street there.
Well, I don't, we're never going to be able to open a street.
No, no. As a matter of fact, I thought we turned that up six months ago.
Right. So, I mean, that's, that's a dead issue.
Right, that alley is a dead issue.
Yeah.
Now, we confirmed that in 2002, when we bought the property, you know, before we started looking, you know, we knew the shoemaker way back before then. When discussions were started and we started pulling records, you know, we were like, whoa, 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 what's this alleyway? You know, for us, as, as to purchase a commercial lot, didn't make sense for us to do that either, and that's why all that was confirmed at that time. 2002 through 2004, I think there was multiple meetings regarding the alleyway.
So this residence, does Tully rent that, or they own that property?
I don't know that that's actually Tully's property. She lives two doors north of there.
Well, it says here, Tully.
Yeah, I know, but it also has a name there that's not correct either.
Well, who lives there?
Actually, my parents live there.
They grew up there.
I mean, last I heard, that house that's right up against it in the back off of Maryland was, I think the bank owned that, if I'm not mistaken.
Someone purchased that last year.
Did they recently purchase it?
Yeah.
Okay.
So this property here is, is being surrounded practically with only a little tiny bit of access right there.
Yeah, but this isn't going to affect that one way or another. I mean, there's, there's no way to fix that.
Henry?
Well, in my recollection, and it's, it needs to be refined, but what I remember about that road coming through to 194 was that State High wouldn't give us access. It was too close to, you know, I don't remember all the details, but they were not going to let us go, so we seemed, we thought it wasn't really, it was fruitless to do anything more with that.
Well, basically, that's not the point of the issue now.
Right.
No?
We're past that.
So the issue tonight is if we agree to the concept plan, that's before us.
Well, I don't think we can agree to that until the city attorney has the opportunity to look over the legality of that alley.
Just because of the alley?
Yeah, I mean, that's really what it is. I mean, I know their attorney says they have...
What's going to happen to this lane up here? It's no good down.
Well...
So did Jay, did Jay have a chance, I guess he didn't, he's out?
We haven't seen anything from Miles and Stockbridge at this point, so, I mean, he'll review that. I mean, that certainly can be done as part of the preliminary plan review. That's when all the agencies typically look at the meat of the project and provide all the comment letters. At the concept level, it's just kind of the very, you know, the very general look at, you know, ingress, egress, the basic use of the property, and, and, you know, that there's provision for stormwater, things like that. So the detail level is the preliminary plan, which will be the next step.
So we could go ahead if we're ready.
I mean, approving the concept, the next step will be, we'll have a pre-submitting meeting with the county.
Accept the concept.
Talk about what agencies will be involved in reviewing. You know, I'm sure we'll have grading, erosion, sediment control, you know, those things from resource management. You know, we aren't going to be touching any, any state or county roads, so, you know, we don't have to go through those processes.
And the others with that alleyway, sorry, is that, you know, we didn't, we kept the fence and the disturbance not even on that alleyway, just to try and avoid any potential, you know, problems anybody might have with it. All we're going to do is plant some buffer trees there, just to...
Well, and I think that's the best we could ask for, is something that'll help screen it from the residential people there.
Yeah, and I just, you know, some evergreens, and of course, that's an expense for, you know, additional expense for us.
Why couldn't this be screened on your own property?
Well, they have a retention basin they have to worry about, too.
Why can't all this moved in here?
Well, because you've got, there's an embankment at the road there.
I understand that. That would be shortening the parking lot.
Well, this, where this basin is, that's kind of an existing swale right there, where the whole lot drains through already, where it has for 50, 60 years.
I mean, that's as close as they can get trees without putting them on this side of the basin, but...
Is this going to be paved?
Yeah.
Okay.
And so I believe that was required at some point, you know, budgetary restrictions, you know, we're planning on taking it.
Okay.
If we had to grab it, I think we discussed maybe if we had to, depending on what the total cost ends up being, we could possibly grab it for a year, and with plans to pay it, the plan right now is paid, absolutely.
So basically, then, we can go ahead if there, if I could get a motion to approve the, to accept the concept plan for distribution. Go wait and have a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the concept plan for distribution.
Is there a second to that? I'll second it. That's how Jake and all the agents can pick it.
We don't want to wait for Jay's opinion before we do that?
No.
Okay.
Not for a concept.
We're still going to listen to Jay.
Right. Did he still come back for preliminary?
I would, I would think with regard to the trees in the, in the alley, you know, worst case would be, you know, our attorney doesn't agree with the Hitchman's attorney, and they've got to figure that out. So worst case for the Hitchman would be, it turns out that they don't have right to it, and the trees need to move over. So probably something that we want to come to agreement on before we get too far in the process, because you don't want to proceed with a lot more engineering and then, but...
There's existing fencing on their whole property, and there's existing trees right here as well. You know, so there is a buffer there existing already, you know.
Well, the whole concern is the alley, and that'd be picked up by the agencies.
You're just adding trees in the middle of the alley, though.
Except one side of it, yeah.
Within the 10 feet.
Exactly.
Yeah, within the 10 feet.
Claire, do you have anything to add from the county side?
I don't know.
Okay. Okay, anybody have any other questions? All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm not in favor of doing anything with the alley.
It's opposed?
Yes.
Did you get that?
But, George, that's not what we're talking about.
Right.
He was accepting the...
I'm not in favor of this particular plan, then.
Right.
Okay. It's passed.
Killing me. You're killing me, Smalls, you're killing me.
That's not true.
So, Jim or Henry, we need to put this on Jay's radar.
Yep.
Maybe you hear something?
Before they come, before they come back to us again.
Couldn't we try to hear something next month? Or whenever that meeting is?
Well, if they use the alley for trees...
That should be reasonable enough, right? At least to give us, you guys listening?
An idea, just talk about it, though.
We'll try, we'll go try for next month to have an answer from Jay.
Okay, are we meeting next month?
Well, our next meeting.
Okay.
No, we're not going to meet in December.
Okay.
It'll be sometime in January. Next item is a request to waive site plan approval, requirement for a 12-by-32-story shed at 100 Antrim Boulevard, Antrim 100, OLC. Jim?
This one is in your packet, there's a kind of a sketch site plan, and on the other side of it was a photo of the existing shed that's there at Lorian now. So basically, they want to put another one up a little bit farther along. In the, in the bottom picture, the location they proposed on the sketch in the bottom picture would be a little bit more in the foreground to the left of the, of the drive. So, obviously, well under 5,000 square feet, no need for any stormwater management, no traffic, no, you know, utilities, nothing like that. It's just a, just a shed like the last one was, so if, if, if approval to waive the site plan approval requirements is granted, they can just come in and apply for a zoning certificate, just like, you know, a resident would for a shed in their backyard. So they still have to, you know, provide the same form and basically a simple site plan like they've given us, rather than going through the full site plan process.
The one there now is, what, 12 by?
Same, same size.
Same size?
32.
Okay.
So is this going to be tucked kind of between the two tree areas there?
I guess all...
There's, there's a lot of kind of scrub vegetation along that side of the property. They, they will have to clear out a small portion of that.
Considering all the forestation, I don't even think it's going to, you're not going to be able to see this from the road, or...
Well, you're going to see part of it.
A little bit.
You're going to see part of it. I went out and looked at it.
Oh, really?
I mean, you'll...
You're going to see it.
It will be, yeah.
But it's no different than any other shed.
Yeah, you'll be able to walk to it only on the middle of the road, though. Because there's no sidewalks.
Right.
Nowhere.
So, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we waive the site plan requirements for the shed.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, open for discussion.
Can't get anything on sidewalks on that?
I wouldn't think so.
Well, no, it's a big building, and it's the second one.
I think our, I think our bite at that apple comes when they go to complete the, the next phase of the assisted living.
Right.
On the main building.
I mean, I think when we try for that, it needs to be on something that, that's them worth doing. I mean, if you say, well, if you're going to put that shed, you have to put all this sidewalk in, well, they'd rather not spend 500 bucks for the shed than have to put in a sidewalk, so it should be on a more substantial project that we attach that to.
Okay, any other questions? Ollie?
I wonder if the regular person out there didn't have a sidewalk in front of his house, he could put a building like that in front of it without putting a sidewalk in.
While the, while the code gives the city the authority to, to do that, it has not been put into practice, at least during the years that I've been involved in any capacity with the city. Basically, for the similar argument that Brad just expressed, that, you know, for somebody to put a $1,000 deck on the back of their house and have to spend $2,000 to put a sidewalk and curb in the front because their house predated the sidewalk requirement, just, it has not been something the city has pushed. They, again, the, the code provides the authority to do that, but it's never been, it's never been required for residential properties. I mean, we've caught a couple with site plans, but there are some that, obviously, like Lorian the first time, you know, we didn't catch with the site plan. Of course, also, that wasn't our road at the time. Now it's our road.
Well, I kind of agree with you. I mean, this isn't the opportunity to require it. When they come to the main building, we need to stay on the grounds. And then I'll support you all the way, Ollie. Any comments from the floor? County?
No.
Okay. Okay, so all those in favor of the motion to waive the site plan approval, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm going to say aye, too, because it's, you know, you got good arguments.
Ordinance and agreement review. Jim or Henry, you want to walk us through this a little bit?
Yeah, we've got a, got an amendment to the zoning code. This goes back to our discussion over, off and on for the last couple of months, about small cell providers and either adding equipment to existing poles or adding new poles, new utility poles in the public right-of-way or utility easements. The legislation, the telecommunication folks are proposing at the state level refers to it as right-of-way, but it covers utility easements and everything, so, at any rate, for the city to be able to regulate these as a structure, we need to amend the zoning code, basically to, to speak to the new chapter that we talked about, which is in the works right now, Chapter 94, which is going to be basically the details for regulating small cell equipment, and Chapter 181, which is our site plan chapter. So basically, the ordinance just adds the, the sentence at the top of Page 2, except those regulated in other areas of the code of the City of Tonnytown, including but not limited to Chapter 94 and Chapter 181. So this is the language that, for lack of a better term, unexempts towers, utility poles, and things like that from the site plan process, because they're going to be subject to now Chapter 181 and 94. So this, this one is going to be up for public hearing at the next council workshop. So we would like to have a motion as to the commission's support to keep moving forward on it, or, or not, if you choose not to. But this is, this is one of the tools, basically, that's going to land the small, small cellular stuff, at least the new poles... that's going to land the small, small cellular stuff, at least the new poles, in the site plan process so that there will be a public process, the property will get posted, and there will be a public opportunity for comment before a poll just goes up in front of somebody's house where there's never been a poll before.
That's, that's really... My major concern is that we have, a lot of our new developments, the majority, have all the utilities underground. And then somebody wants to pull, put a poll up.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion or a recommendation that we can take, or that can be taken back to the council?
Well, Mr. Chair, since I'll be taking this to the council and voting there, I will not be voting here. I'll abstain from this vote specifically.
All right. I still need a motion then, or a recommendation? I make the recommendation that the coun, that the council approves this ordinance. Is there a second to that?
I second it.
Open for discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? And more?
Abstain. Thank you.
Jim, your report?
We've already gone through the hitchman and the storage building. So, as well as the ordinance for the small cellular stuff, so I won't take time on that. I don't have information about the dumpster yet. I did talk to Andy Cohen from Maryland Compassionate Care and Wellness, and he has a, they have a monthly meeting, which was just today. So, he was going to bring up that and try to develop some kind of plan today for that. So, I did not hear anything from him this afternoon after their meeting. So, hopefully, I will have the information for you next month. So, the other thing that I wanted to bring up was Meads Crossing has requested change to the Afar Station Plan being to plant whips or bare root material rather than the one-inch caliper trees that were specified on the plan. From the county's standpoint, you can do either or. It's just a question of how many per acre you do. You do, you know, many more whips per acre than you do the one-inch caliper trees. In our case, a portion of that planting was supposed to be done on Ballinger Park, which was agreed to back with the annexation agreement that brought the Ballinger farm into the city to begin with when they donated the parkland to the city. So, at that point, it was agreed upon that, you know, whoever would eventually develop the Ballinger property would be able to use up to eight acres, I think. And, and I didn't look at the, the annexation agreement. This is referenced in the DARA from Meads Crossing that they can use up to eight acres of Ballinger Park for Afar Station for the project. So, we have a, a planting reservation area there and a planting plan that CLSI drew up, and that also calls for the one-inch caliper trees. So, I did advise Steve and Ed that it would be quicker just to stick with the plan because, having spoken with Chairman Parker and city manager, we didn't think that it was in the best interest of the city to make the switch. So, that's where we are at this point. So, again, it's, from the county's standpoint, they can do either. It's just that it takes, for the city's perspective, it takes longer to develop the full tree canopy if you're planting the whips or the bare root material than if you're planting the one-inch caliper trees, and that equates to additional years of, of mowing and maintenance on the trees. Because with, with this kind of project, it's recommended that you continue mowing until the tree canopy is contiguous overhead. So, it just takes, you know, ballpark, I mean, it varies species to species of tree, but, you know, ballpark would be about five years farther behind that we would have to do that many more years of mowing if we went to the whips. So, that's, that's why we're not crazy about the switch. So, and I'm guessing that Steve probably would like to jump in here.
Yes. Yes, and I was surprised. The, I actually approached the county on this back in May and had some communication with Jonathan Bovens, the county reviewer, who indicated that there, there is no plan revision necessary from the county's perspective because we've designated a tree area and we can do whatever we want within that. So, and I've got the email documentation that I've been having filed. The, from an approval standpoint, the planning commission, neither the planning commission nor the city council approve forest conservation. It's not part of your package. It's a separate plan that gets approved by the county. So, I didn't imagine that there was a concern. And from our experience, the, there are pluses and minuses to doing one-inch. And Jim is somewhat correct. The survivability of one-inch is higher, so it will have less likelihood of having to replant as we go through the maintenance period that the county requires. But the savings are considerable. And it's just, I don't, I know you, you may not care about the numbers, but it's a difference between $113,000 for planting the, the whips versus 300 and, I think it's $327,000 for plant on one inch here. So, I kind of understand it, but again, we're, we're working within the regulations. It doesn't require a plan amendment. It, it's a considerable savings. And the end result is, what I was actually told was it was probably about a three-year differential in, in planting. And we have to take it through the maintenance period regardless. So, I, I don't know how you all feel about man-made forests, but I, I feel like doing it as cost-effectively as possible is, is probably the best thing to do. And I would also add that if there was, felt there was a need for us to go back and revisit this, I guess we could also go back and revisit the landscaping, which, what I understand, the requirements have changed like this. And technically, we're required to plant less now than we agreed to. We want to plant. We want the site to look good. And we want to do the landscaping. But, you know, we would like some consideration on being able to do what the county allows us to do as far as planning what we want.
Well, it may be from the county, but the overall package and approval is from this commission right here.
Well, I don't think that included the forest conservation.
Well, I think so. Not as an individual piece of it, but as the whole package.
It's not part of the, it's not part of the package.
I think, I disagree with you.
It's not part of the plan. It's not what you all, if you, if you all approve. That 50 pages of plan, it's not included in forest conservation.
Well, my question is, there is a maintenance period after they're planted, and who is responsible for that maintenance period? They are. So, if it's an extra three years of maintenance, what effect does that have on the city?
Our cost to do it. Their cost.
I thought they were maintaining.
Well, it's going to be...
It's a, it's a three-year period regardless. That's the last county inspection is at the end of three years.
Okay.
But the maintenance period for the whips go on beyond that, right?
Right.
So, you're saying if they favor one inch...
The maintenance period for any planting goes on beyond that. It's just that for the bare root material, it's a longer period. That's all. So, the, by way of example, three years ago, the city participated in a grant-funded tree planting where we planted over 1,000 trees between Ballinger Park, Memorial Park, and Roberts Mill Park. That was three years ago. The maintenance period is up on that. They've had, as part of that bid that the county did for that, that grant-funded project, the, they had a contract of mowing and doing the seasonal maintenance for all those tree plantings. That three-year period is up now. So, now it will be up to the city to mow, you know, between the rows of trees, make sure the tree shelters that have come down are, are, you know, put back up, and, and also to stay on top of it to make sure that if the, you know, when we get to a point where the trunks are, are, you know, growing out and basically touching the shelters, that we remove the shelters. So, that, that happens regardless of whether it's going to be bare root material or one-inch caliper trees. It's just that, at the end of three years, we're not at that same point of growth. And, you know, the maintenance period goes on ideally until there's, you know, contiguous canopy above, at which point then you can kind of relax on the mowing. I mean, there may, there may still be some maintenance involved, but it's not as, as critical as when the plants are, you know, less mature. So, and I guess in response to it not being a part of the plan, the Afar Station Plan is part of the preliminary plan that the Planning Commission approved. It's not part of the construction drawings or the subdivision plat. So, so Steve is correct that it's not in the most recent plan set that you did approve. It goes back to the preliminary plan where we looked at the entire project.
Which we did approve.
Right. Before, before we broke, before we got the construction drawings for Phase 1 and 1A. So, the, the Afar Station covers the entire, the whole project. So, it's not part of the individual phase construction drawing sets.
What was planted?
Well, it was part of the preliminary, and you had to go through the preliminary to get to the final.
My...
George, one of you...
What, what was planted out there that has now expired at the three-year point? What was planted?
They were all by the road, right? By 194? Actually, no. Those, those areas were, those areas were Afar Station for other projects. There's, and I, I think Meads may have actually already planted some out there in the area, the floodplain area between the stream and the road.
What were they? What were they? What were they that they already planted?
They were whips.
And the, the stuff that I was referring to, at least at, at Ballinger, is on the far side of the stream from the road. During the winter, you can probably look through and see the, the tree tubes, the shelters, you know, on a clear day. But that was a, a variety of, of just native trees. I mean, I can pull up the plan that, you know, goes by how many of each species, but that was something that, that we agreed to with, with the county by, you know, offering the acreage. We agreed we would keep it in, you know, that we wouldn't go in and cut down the trees that they planted for us. So, but again, the, the three-year maintenance period that they contracted for is up. So, now that's on our dime.
We trim them, too?
We haven't yet.
I mean, we have to trim, we have to trim.
Right. I mean, any, yeah.
And be gorgeous, right?
Yeah. I mean, ultimately, the idea is that it will become a forest and, you know, we'll, we'll manage that just like we would any other wooded area. If there's a dead tree and it's presenting a hazard, we can go in there and, you know, and take it down or something. We, we've had to do that with other wooded areas in the city. But typically, we don't go in routinely and, you know, have an arborist go through and inspect them regularly once, once they're mature. Usually, it's just a, you know, a matter of cleaning up after a storm or if there's a dead tree, you know, taking care of that. But we don't, it's not like a street tree where we're going to have to have an arborist come in every so many years and keep it, you know, trimmed and tidy and things like that. The idea is to kind of create a, a forest, woods.
So, what are you asking of us, or what is our requirement?
Well, I had, I had put it in my report just to make you aware of, of the request.
And the request is made to whom? To you?
It was made to the county, and the county solicited our, our, our feedback on it.
And they should. You know, it's no different than when we, when they built Curl Vista out there and they wanted to go with other piping underground for the sewer lines. And we turned them down. And this is just as wrong as that is.
It was storm drains, but, right, get the idea.
But this is just as wrong. I mean, we've changed everything out there. I mean, right from the day one, we've changed the zoning and everything else so we could get this development. And we just keep on changing, changing, and changing.
I'm not asking for a change. I'm asking...
Yes, you are.
What county policy is?
You're asking for a change.
It's not a change.
And you're, and you're saying if you don't get a change, you're going to go back and bring it back to us for, you know, everything to be, maybe that's what we ought to do because there's a lot of things we could go over on the plans if they wanted to bring them all the way back and start at base one because there's a lot of things changed over the last 10 years.
Well, even the storm management and everything.
My concern is that we are at a point where we are closing on a development loan in December. We're scheduled to close on December 22nd. In order to do that, I have to have a public works agreement with the county. And in order to do that, I have to have this issued as well. I found out about this, fortunately, through one of the Ballingers today, who let me know that this was on the agenda for tonight. It catches me by surprise. I'm not trying to jam anything down your throat. I'm relying on what I was told back in May when they, I requested then of the reviewing authority, I specifically asked whether I needed to amend plan. I was told I did not because in either case...
No, because the plan should go through as we passed them.
In either case, I adhere to the law that is applicable. So, I'm not trying to, this, this is thrown on me, and it is expensive. And that may not matter to you, but it does...
I want a nice development out there that we've been trying to get from day one. And I'm hoping it don't, it, it's not coming to that.
If I plant the same tree and it looks the same in two ye, two years, I don't know what the difference is. And it, it, it's what we did when we did the previous planting in there for the coordinate engineer.
The plan was, was passed as a whole?
I, you know, when that was passed, I, I can't even tell you whether, that would have been the preliminary forest conservation plan. It would have designated areas. I can't say, I, I don't know whether it specifies a, a stocking size. But I can tell you that, again, the county, the, the authority that approves this is saying that if you can, we have choices. We can plant 200 of the one-inch or we can plant 700 of the whips.
All right, Jim. What do you, what do you want from us? You want a recommendation from us to go with something, or what do you, what?
This, this was just, this was not a, a specific action item on the agenda. This was just an update of, of an active project. And, and just getting you guys in the loop that, that the request was made.
Well, request is a change.
We, we obviously have a different opinion or interpretation of whether it's a change or not. So, I suppose we need to, you know, speak with Jay when he's back, back on, you know, on city time. You know, he's, he's aware via, because he was copied on emails back and forth about it. So, you know, he knows what's going on with that, but he's been away, so I don't have his, you know, ruling one way or the other about it.
Does hear any other comments?
Well, based on what I'm hearing from Steve, there needs to be some sort of action because they're coming down on deadline with the bank. Now, when did this become an issue? Because I feel like every two months, there's a new issue with Meads Crossing that previously told everything's good, and now there's another issue. So, when did this become an issue?
I would, I would have to go back through emails and see when I was contacted by the county. I was contacted by the county at that particular time. We were not doing anything with Meads, and that, that has been, we're back on...
Do you have the email, Steve?
Yeah. So, I will, let me address that, too. So, Jonathan asked for that information and, or indicated that he'd been cut off from communication because we were behind in our payments in early November, and we made our payment promptly, but communication didn't get passed on.
Okay. Okay.
And so it wasn't until mid-November that Jonathan re-engaged, I guess, and he, I first became aware of it a week ago, and I got an email.
So.
It became that this is now a problem.
Okay. Now, let me, let me propose, or let me ask this question of you. What's less expensive for you, to plant one-inch calipers, or to do the whips with an extended maintenance period on you as opposed to the city?
Extended.
Would that be cheaper for you? That prevents the city's costs for those extra three years at that point.
That was, that is my major concern, is the time that goes to a canopy. We'd have to pick that up, and it's going to be a lot longer period of time.
Right.
Would it be with a two-inch, two-inch one-inch?
Right. I, I think that's the way we should consider going. Mr. Chair is requesting that they simply extend the maintenance period to be their responsibility and to go with the whips in that manner. That's my suggestion.
How did the one-inch?
Wouldn't that go in the DARA?
No.
No.
The DARA, the DARA doesn't speak to this at all. It, it reserves the AWA, because I've got a copy of it, if you want.
Because, no.
Would have anything do with the law?
I'm with you on this, but how is this going to be picked up and carried on five years from now?
I've got an idea.
Yes, sir.
I'm still waiting for the, the PWA to come from the city, and I would suggest that we have, that it recover, that there will be a county PWA that I don't think we ought to tamper with, because they're only interested in getting through that three-year period. However, in the city PWA, Jay ought to be able to add a clause that says that the, the maintenance period for the park, which is the area of concern, is extended by three years.
Extended from what?
County ought to be.
From the, from the.
It'd be six years total.
Total six years maintenance.
Correct.
Correct.
But the county ought to be advised.
Well, I think the county will be advised. I mean, that's, Jim will.
Would the county like the, would Claire, would you like the?
The county is okay with either way.
Do you have any comments on this, or you?
I don't have any.
Okay.
How did the one-inch caliper be, get into this anyway?
Excuse me?
How did the one-inch caliper become an issue in this?
Money. No, I think it was because that was the original.
That's the.
That's original in, in the preliminary.
The preliminary plan has a specific planting schedule, number of trees of each species, and it specifies the one-inch caliper stock.
Which we did approve.
Right.
And the.
But can, Jim, do you believe that Jay can include this in our PWA? I mean, it's not signed, so anything's up, but then what approval does that need before they can sign it? Council approval?
That's, right, the public works agreement is a little more council.
Okay.
So, this is not part of the Meads Crossing Plan. This is a plan that C.L.S.H.I.D. drew up involving a park that delineates the various a-far station areas, and they're called out for, you know, a couple of them are specifically called out for Meads Crossing. But part of this plan for the park is also includes a, a planting schedule, so it goes into detail, and this is pretty simple for what would be on the preliminary plan. It talks about how they're, you know, the methodology for planting, how, how close they have to be, how they're going to be state, and so on. And it calls for planting plan, plant specifications, one-inch caliper, bald and burlap hardwoods, and it talks about five to seven gallon containers, again, one-inch caliper, 200 trees per acre, and then it goes on and breaks out the species and the company and how many of each. And that, that's the same information that typically is on a preliminary plan when we're looking at the whole site, the whole project.
Right.
So, so that was, that was part of my concern was that, and, and I don't know how involved the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, you know, may have been with that. I, I initially hoped to show this to the Parks and Rec Advisory Board to get their feedback, but they did not meet this month, so they won't be meeting again until December. So, and I, you know, here, that, that just is not going to work timing-wise, so.
So what's the?
So that was, again, that was part of my concern, is that we have planned this point for lunch about the trees, and we're changing them.
Well, I understand the change from that. Are we changing the number of trees you're planting, Steve? So what's that change?
There'd be more.
Yes, we plant 700 per acre. And again, that's.
But it's going to be covering the same amount of space as the previous? Okay.
It is, and, and again, it's the.
So it's going to be more densely forested area?
The ones that survive.
We still, you have to have.
What's your survival rate required to be from the county?
Seventy-five percent.
Seventy-five percent, okay.
Is that why you plant them so close? Because of the survival rate so many more?
To allow, yes, and then to get the canopy coverage quicker. And, and this is all consistent with the state law, George, that, and they, they give you different options as to what you can do, and you can, typically, you can freely choose.
All right, let's back up to what you suggested with the six-years maintenance. How can we put that in words that we can get an approval on and that Jay's not going to have an issue with?
I think that's as simple as we, we approve the change, the change to whips if the developer undertakes maintenance for six years.
Make that as a motion?
That is a motion, sir.
Is there a second to that? I'm not sure if I want to, but that's the best.
I think it's the best solution.
That's the best out, best out of so far. I just get so tired of so many changes to this project. If some of this couple hundred thousand dollars you're saving here would go back into the project, those townhouses or something, I mean, make me feel better.
Well, that's.
But, but, but just to move on with this, I'm going to, I'm going to, excuse me, I'm, I'm going to second the motion.
What are you available?
So we can talk about.
Okay. I don't, I understand what, what you're saying, Mr. Chairman. But I think right now, the important thing is to make sure this project happens and to not put up any more hurdles that we don't have to put up at this point.
We're not creating the hurdles.
And that's fine, but I also don't want to make mountains out of molehills at the same time.
Do not.
And I think.
We are.
I feel like this is an appropriate compromise between the two. It's not going to cost the city anything extra, and the additional expense goes on to them. We get the same end result. We just may not see that end result for an additional three years, but we're not going to see it anyway at the pace that Ballinger Park's being built.
Are we keeping a bond for them extra years?
I would say so. I mean, if it's still under their maintenance, then it would be under the, under the bond, is that correct?
The, the county will release the, the bond. Actually, I think the county releases the bond once the planting is done.
So you got nothing to back up?
Right, but.
You got nothing to back up?
But that's a three-year agreement with the county. We're talking about a six-year now.
I understand. Yep.
Steve?
If it's, if it's within the city PWA, and it's clearly spelled out, even if that has to be a, a line item of Ballinger Park tree maintenance, that's fine. And, and, you know, and I think that would be something that the city in terms of cover. And, and let me, let me backpedal and also give you another update that may help ease some of this pain. Ryan is building the small single-family homes. We are under contract with Bob Ward to build the townhouses now. We've gotten Ryan away from that. We've gotten Ryan away from the higher end. We are in the final stages of having a contract with a different builder for the premium lots. So a lot of your concerns, I, I know, are with the quality to build and with the architecture and with the builder. I, everything I've heard in this city about Bob Ward is everything that I've heard about Bob Ward anywhere else.
Well, you went out and took pictures of a couple of different places in Tawny Town about how, and was trying to insult what we've already got, and what we got is what we had from 30 years ago, which was that kind of building then. You're a new, better building, yes, we have to admit that. But, you know, when you insult one, and then you try to do the same thing yourself, that's wrong too.
I, I did not mean to insult, I meant to compare.
Well, it was an insult, because, you know.
All right, we got, we got a.
Before we, I want to put something I've been thinking about. I'm not so sure that I would want to hold the bond up from, from the county, you know, he's completed his task with the county. We can incorporate something with just the agreement between the city and him for the extra, extra time.
And that's what it should be.
Well, we're going to.
That's fine.
Well, right, and that's, that's what we were just talking about, is a separate thing from the county that would cover this.
That's not how I understand.
Okay.
Right.
I didn't say it clearly, but that was what I was trying to say.
Right, okay.
The county's got the three years, we got the additional three years, we got a total of six years on our side.
They hold these money for an extra three years.
All right.
Well, someone's going to hold the money, whether it's the county or us, that's the.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor, and it's been seconded. Any further discussion? Here are none, all in favor of that motion, and we're talking about extending the maintenance, three years, making it total six.
And allowing the whips.
And allowing with the whips.
Are we going to talk to Jay first?
You know, Jay's going to work it out.
Yeah, we're going to direct Jay to work it out.
Right, he's going to work it out.
Why do we wait until we talk here for Jay?
Because we're not going to have time. Our next meeting's going to be in January, and he's going to get this squared away in December.
We can, based on what we've discussed and agreed on, I think we can direct Jay to do this.
Right. And if Jay has a problem, then we'll have to handle it.
We'll discuss it, yeah.
So all of them's in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
I'm opposed to it too.
Oh, man.
Well, we got.
You've got no tiebreaker up there.
Nope, no tiebreaker.
Well, let's figure out how to break that tie then.
So what's your drawback? Golly, it's sort of you. What's your drawback on this?
Just scary.
Okay, George?
First of all, I'm differing about the trees. I'm not in favor of 135 townhouses out there.
We, we can't get into that.
Trees, the only thing we're talking about is the one-inch trees.
There's a lot of things, though, it's adding up to.
I know.
It's not.
Well, that's not the point tonight.
I've told you that I, I'm not in favor of it.
Okay. Roddy, what, what's your thoughts?
You mentioned the city planted several trees between the three parks in the city, correct?
Right.
And did we plant one-inch calipers, or did we plant whips?
They were.
They weren't one-inch calipers.
They weren't, they were not whips. They weren't bare root material. They were like three to five gallons, some bald and burlapped. I don't know that they were one-inch caliper. They may have been younger than that.
But they weren't whips either.
No, no, they were, they were, yeah, they were.
Yeah, yeah.
They were like a minimum three-gallon container, you know, because they actually had to dig holes for them as opposed to, you know, just poke, we, and, and part of the contract with the county, they were able to include a weekend planting where the contractor would be on site so that we could do a community involvement project, and we had a number of Boy Scout troops come out and plant trees at Ballinger Park. We had troops from Tawny Town and Westminster participate. The city manager manned the grill and fed the boys, it was a, it was a.
Are there pictures from that? Because I'd love to see that.
There's, there's a few, yeah.
I do have.
But, but at any rate, they, they actually, you know, the contractor dug the holes, you know, so it was definitely, you know, larger than, than whips or bare root material.
I'd like to make another statement too.
And, and they, you know, regardless, there's, you know, there's maintenance involved. You have to check them a couple times a season to make sure the shelters don't get knocked down, deer knock the, you know, snap the stakes off, knock the shelters down, and you need to get the shelters back and, and back tight to the ground, or else there's a, an issue where voles will get in there and feed off the tree, and you'll end up with like a little pointy stub in the middle of the shelter if they're not secured right. So, I mean, there is maintenance involved regardless of whips or.
Well, and I understand that, and, and the key to this is that that maintenance is not on the city's shoulders for a longer time than typical, and I, I think that's what makes this an acceptable compromise.
That's, that's my concern, shifting that from the, to the taxpayers.
Well, and that's why we're trying to avoid that.
Okay, let's back up for a second. That motion didn't pass.
Correct.
Okay. Let's make sure I put that on record. George?
A meeting, a, a planting of one-inch caliper will be much nicer looking than 700 whips planted in a, in a plot.
Is that a motion?
No, he's just making a statement, and we have to agree.
No second there.
To me, looks is going to be so critical, and we've already made a change in the, the looks of the area before.
But what area is this going in, George? That's what I'm going to ask you now.
This is the park.
It, it's a park.
Right.
It's a, it's a piece of land next to a major highway.
It's an area.
It's a piece of land that's not in use and probably will not be in use for the next 10 years. By the time we get around to developing Ballinger Park, these will have canopies on them, and it's, I mean, basically, what we have now is a breeding ground for trees, so let's use it as a breeding ground for trees.
All right, unless I hear another motion on this, then the commission has not made a decision, and we'll move on.
Ollie, what can I say to change your mind? I mean, what, what is your major hang-up that I can ease your mind on?
Well, Steve, what else can you add?
Well, I, I think we need to hear, and then Steve can, can counter what, what he hears from Ollie, so.
Just all the changes, and you're talking about it a long time, and, you know, if, if they were already building and coming done that, I probably went along with it. I would have went along with it. But I haven't even seen them start. I haven't seen nothing. And it's been years. I've sat up here for years.
Steve?
I can promise you one thing.
And I've always been here too. I've never missed a meeting.
Do you think that this has been a deliberate and joyful experience, not starting for 10 years?
I'm, I sort of wonder. You know, we have went along with it all. Yeah, the, the 50 more townhouses and then, and all the difference, and, you know, you're running over and saying, well, get rid of this house because we don't have to take care of the, the handicapped person. You know, I've seen all of that. But, you know, if the trees are only going in the park, I'll change my motion.
Or you change your vote.
But.
Your flat?
If the trees are only going over in the Ballinger Park and not in the development, then I'll, I'll change it.
They're both.
I'll change it out.
Both?
But I won't let, I, I won't never vote for them in the development.
You said they're in both.
So development and the park.
And how many between, or how many in each are we looking at?
I think the majority is in the Meads parcel and the wetland and those, the stream, the valley area.
Right, because they're building up around that, that water area in the middle, which is important.
I want a nice development out there, and at one time, we really did have it with the alleys and everything else, and then we started changing. And we still may have it because the townhouses are going to be nice, you know, but, but it's going to be a lot of townhouses out in the middle of there that we went along with. I'm surprised George ever went along with it.
All right, let's get, let's just stay on topic here.
The area on the site that gets planted.
All right, let's go back to the trees and nothing else.
Straight line runs through it.
Right.
You landscape the edges. It's, it's, it's in our best interest to keep it looking good too, and it's, I, having too, and it's, it, I, having my experience between one-inch and, and whips, is, is there's not a big difference, in some ways, the whips look better because it is there.
I changed my vote.
Okay, well, I'd like to remake the motion, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Let's see, then that motion was, uh, we go with the whips, with the six-year maintenance?
Yes, that's correct, sir.
Okay, you originally made the motion, who seconded? I did.
You did last time, sir.
I seconded, okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Looks like it's unanimous. I did hear aye, George, right?
We did.
Okay.
Thank you.
And let, we had one update, we plan on, load closes on, uh, December twenty-second, we will start building here, there in January, so we're at the point where this is happening. I appreciate it.
And that's exciting.
Yes.
I can't wait to see it.
And we will be back to you guys with Bob Ward's architecture, we know that you all get to see that again.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Jim, we're back to, I guess, the construction phase projects, or-
Give me a second, I'm still, I'm still scribbling.
Oh, okay.
Okay, um, last thing that I had was just, um, wanted to, to make sure everyone was aware of a project that's going to be, well, is ongoing, in the design case at least.
Now I know where that's at. Dared all night wondering what that was.
So did I.
Now I know what it is.
I, I still don't know what it is.
But this-
This is O'Brien Avenue at Sarah's Choice Phase Four, uh, this is Roberts Mill Run over here, uh, Sarah's Choice also at this side of O'Brien, um, one of the, well, the last couple lots are part of Phase Four, but the rest of O'Brien was earlier phases. There are several existing stormwater management facilities, um, a combination from Sarah's Choice and others. As part of our MPDES permit, we have to retrofit, uh, for twenty percent of our incurvies area, we have to go back and add water quality, uh, treatment to existing stormwater facilities that didn't, weren't built in an era when any water quality, um, measures were required. So, these ponds, um, were a good candidate for that, uh, the city has entered into a memorandum of agreement with the county, uh, several years ago, where we have a cost share, um, through our town-county agreement, we're contributing money into a fund that's covering these retrofits. The county is basically picking up eighty percent of the cost of these retrofits, and the municipalities are all contributing twenty percent, and that cost is based upon the number of incurvies acres that each municipality has to treat, so the funding is already in place for these projects, and the city is acting as the, um, the, the project manager on, on these projects as well, um, because they have the staff and expertise, they've been doing these projects, um, for a number of years because they have been a Phase One MPDES jurisdiction for a number of years, um, and the requirement for us to retrofit is a fairly recent requirement, um, and that's why we partnered with the county several years ago and are now on a joint permit with the county. At any rate, that's kind of the background. So, the plan is basically to take this, these small facilities and combine, combine them into one large wet pond, so, I'm not sure if you can quite see, the lines get kind of dark, um, the area from here in, where the purple lines are, would be a wet pond overall, um, the rest of the facility will fill after storm events and then drain, you know, back down to this, this always wet area. Um, it's, it will be similar, although larger scale than the pond that's, um, by the middle school property, um, the Faritown Pond, that was designed as, um, also to incorporate like a wetland area and, um, uh, kind of an environmental area that the middle school could utilize for the students, um, but that one was a similar construction where it's going to, you know, accumulate more water after storm events, after rain events, and then go back down, but still maintain a, a wet level throughout the year. So, um, one of these ponds has actually failed, um, so it, it's a great candidate for, for retrofit, um, we've already had one meeting where, um, all the contiguous property owners were notified, and, um, probably about a dozen people came out, uh, we met with county staff from the Bureau of Resource Management, um, shared the concept with them, and all in all, folks were supportive, uh, there were some questions about the, you know, the slopes involved, how deep it would be, and, um, the slopes are intended to be mowable for all of the dry areas, um, and even as you get into the wet area, it's still a very shallow slope until you get to approximately, I think, four-foot depth, and then it will get steeper, but it still isn't like a sudden drop-off where you're just, you know, if you decide to wade in for some reason, um, you're not suddenly gonna just go over a cliff if you, you know, go too far in, it just gets to be a steeper slope, but still on the human walk. So this project is moving forward, it's at the preliminary plan stage right now, um, so CLSI is the design engineer for the county, and, um, the county's reviewing it in terms of the hydrology and stormwater management criteria, uh, CDM's gonna be looking at it because there's going to be a sewer line that will have to be relocated because this is gonna be much deeper than this facility is already, and there is a sewer line that runs through that area, and also CDM will look at it in terms of, um, future crossing of the outfall area here where the city would love to have a bridge, um, at some point, and this project is being engineered so that the weir wall is going to incorporate the bridge abutments, so that when the city is able to fund the deck, the bridge, um, we will only have to fund the roadway portion and the actual bridge deck, uh, the, the footing, the, the abutments will be in place as part of this project. So, I just wanted to make you aware of this, this is not really gonna come through the site-in-time process, it's a, you know, a joint city-county project, um, the city obviously will retain ownership of, or, you know, keep ownership up upon and maintain it, um, but it should be much easier to maintain because they'll have a much more gradual slope than the smaller ponds that we have now, um, and, uh, I've seen a number of these facilities that the county has done, and they, they, they end up being very nice-looking facilities compared to, you know, what we call the bomb creators that we built for ten years in the, in the eighties and go into the nineties and, um, so, construction hopefully will begin in the two thousand and eighteen calendar year, um, but I just wanted to make you guys aware that the project is going on in case you do hear somebody, you know, talking about it, um, again, it's not something that's gonna go through the site-in-time process because it's really a more public works, um, improvement project, um, but I just wanted to make sure you guys were aware of the project and what was going on out there. So I'll keep you updated as things progress, but, um, you know, ultimately for us, the good news is that, you know, it reduces what it costs for that, for O'Brien Avenue.
Where will that be?
Significantly.
Where will that be?
Right here. We own, we own this parcel, um, this is known as Parcel K, um, as well as this strip here, so, um, this is, uh, O'Brien Avenue ends here and Crimson Avenue ends here, I believe, yeah, so, um, so ultimately, O'Brien will continue across that culvert, well, it will be a bridge on the culvert crossing.
Did you say that that pond will be, have standing water?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it, it's being-
Surrounded by vegetation, tall vegetation, they said.
Okay.
Yeah.
But no, no fence?
As we, as we move on, there will be options that, that we can discuss, you know, the behavior of, of walking paths, perhaps they would connect, you know, one end of O'Brien to the other, um, you know, it could be a, a blacktop walking path could be put around there as a, a little amenity for the community or anybody who wants to take a walk around the pond, um, of course, the downside of that is you're putting more people adjacent to the pond, and you don't really want people going into the stormwater pond.
Correct.
Um, so, you know, with the fence then comes questions of, you know, if you have a, or with the path, you know, the idea of a fence becomes more critical, I suppose, um, so those are things that we'll need to work out, uh, the, the county is probably not going to foot build fencing as part of the stormwater management, you know, retrofit, that would be something we could see, we'd have to, to fund, um, but, you know, at this point, the, the slope is gentle enough that, that, um, you know, it's not a huge change if we did want to incorporate a footpath around there, um, you know, it would, it would serve to, you know, give you a way to walk from one side of O'Brien Avenue to the other, I don't know how many people are missing the ability to do that currently, um, but it also depends upon, um, you know, how quickly the, the mayor council, you know, how they want to prioritize that bridge deck and the completion of O'Brien Avenue, uh, you know, maybe you may recall it took a very long time for Grand Drive to connect, um, after we had the Trevanien side and the Baltimore Street side of the Grand for probably, what, twenty years before it was connected.
Well-
So, um, so this has been about ten, I guess, since, uh, Sarah's Choice was built, um, so maybe we'll get a bridge in there before twenty.
Yep.
So, anyhow, that was really just, uh, to kinda get you guys on lead, and then we shouldn't have been talking about that.
Stuck there, aren't you, somewhere?
Stuck in some there.
You're fast from the bottom.
Yeah.
That's the way to do it.
That was the last thing that I had.
Pardon me?
That was the last thing that I had.
Okay. Uh, Jay's not here, he didn't pass anything on, so I guess we're up to-
He did.
He did?
He sent out his wishes from Hawaii.
This is a ho-ha.
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah. County update?
Um, I have no county update this month.
Okay. Other businesses, uh, we just talked about that, Roberts Mill, right?
Yep.
So, Henry?
Yes? Tonight I do have something. The, uh, State of Maryland passed new open meeting laws and regulations, and they became effective in October, which means some of you up there need to have, be trained on the open meetings laws. I know Brad has been, uh, but, you know, what the mayor did was he appointed a full city council so that somebody would always be there, so I would recommend the chairman to direct the rest of them to get the training, they have, uh, once the appointment takes place, well, in other words, once you do that, they have ninety days to take the course, and it's an online course, and it's not that, maybe take about a forty-five minutes at night.
It took me a good bit longer than that.
I'm just slow, I can't help that.
All right.
You took it all in.
Maybe it's the next one we go to.
Although, this has gotta be done, you know, unless, you know, he'll carry the weight.
Yeah, I can-
Somebody can carry the weight until we do it.
Right.
Right.
I mean, I have the weight.
Again, I didn't bring that up.
Okay.
I've only been named in one lawsuit about open meetings, so I think we're good.
Okay. Anything else? George?
No.
Randy?
Nothing additional, sir.
Ollie?
Nope.
Okay, what do you, you think we're gonna have anything to schedule in the first, second week in January, or can we make it to January twenty-ninth?
I think we may have a, uh, request for a site-in-time, we were at, um, Dunkin' Donuts, they went to direct a fence between them and a particular contiguous property.
Are they not getting along well?
Not-
One could say that.
Yeah, you could say, you, yeah.
So, when do you-
As I'm sure you're aware, there have been some long-running issues out in that area, so, um, I think, I think they're-
I thought Jackie put that to sleep years ago.
Jackie who?
Jackie was on the council.
What, what does, what did she do, threaten her?
Well, sort of kindly in council one night about putting us, having her to put a sidewalk out there, and she's never been back to council or nothing since, they used to sit in back there with me.
Well, they are no longer they.
They are no longer there?
They.
Oh, okay.
She's-
So you wanna look at like January eighth?
He got out, so.
Well, January eighth is city council meeting.
That's right.
So, you've, if you're up into a Tuesday, you could do the ninth.
Any reason why we can't do a Tuesday?
What does that look, the day after the council meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You have to do two evenings that weekend.
I'm telling you, I don't know if I can handle it.
The ninth?
January ninth.
Yeah.
Now, is this definitely, or you-
Yes.
It is.
I, yeah, I would say it's very-
He contacted us and inquired about putting up the fence, I don't have a drawing at this point, um, I've been in touch with the business owner, the property owner, and advised them, you know, of the process they need from the commission.
They're trying to erect some sort of sound barrier, because-
Because of the music coming from Dunkin' Donuts?
Sorry?
So because of the music that's blaring from Dunkin' Donuts?
Uh, yeah, and the fact that they keep turning the volume up on the speaker, and she actually confronted-
I've brought that up before to people.
She's actually confronted customers, and the customers, you know, they just pulled out a line, just, psh, back to the next Dunkin' Donuts.
Maybe she should.
Okay, January ninth. Okay.
I'm okay with that.
Okay, George, okay, so, I entertain a motion for adjournment.
Let me-
I'll second.